It is now six P M. So we will begin the work study session for the Adrian City Commission on April first, two thousand twenty four. Roll call please. Mayor Heath, present. Mr. Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gatz.
President.
All commission members present, with the exception of Commissioner Roberts. At this time, I will turn it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the first item is for you all. In various fashions, you've asked that we talk about your rules. And procedures and. Or a training related to your rules and procedures or. You know, the way you conduct the meetings or can conduct your meetings. The rules, five stories, et cetera. So we have a specific request from a couple of commissioners to have a training related to that. We have at least one other commissioner's asked to talk about the particular language or the rules and procedures. So I put this on the agenda for you to have that. Conversation wherever it may take you. I will say that we talked about the rules procedure last in two thousand twenty one. I checked before I came down here. That was the time that you added. A three minute timeline to this. It's the last time you looked at this. With that as an introduction, I'll turn it back over to. You all and let you decide what exactly it is you want to talk about in that context.
Well, I was one that emailed about the training with the rule of procedure. I think it's beneficial to us before we start making decisions about possible changes. I remember when people were talking about how you, I don't take things lightly. We're going to change some rules of order or something like that. I think we need to be fully informed before we decide just to make it on our personal biases or opinions or thoughts at that time. I like, and I think, you know, Fred Lucas, I think, was brought up, who's excellent at that training. To provide us with information, not only about rules and procedures, but he can provide us with, oh, like. What is our actual role? What is our responsibility? What happens? You know, if we put anything in writing yet any time or what if we say something, is it a personal thing or is it a view of the city? I think all those things need to be just put on the table and made clear to all of us what we're talking about, what we.
Bert, can you talk about the kind of training that Brett does and what that would look like?
Well, he does. It's basically similar to the N M L O M A. Open Meetings Act training. So really what he does is he goes through and he, he basically lays out what is a meeting for? What is your role? What is your responsibility? And how does the Open Meetings Act affect you personally? And it really is just a top to bottom. I've watched him do it a couple of times. The last time was in Brooklyn. It lasts about an hour. And then it's question and answer also. But it's, it's not a meeting. It's the training. It's, you know, he will be teaching you, lecturing you. But he does take questions. I will tell you, I learned something from it. And I've been doing this for a long time. He's very good.
Is there an advantage or disadvantage between Fred doing it and the Michigan Municipal League? Since we're also members of M M L and they've trained some of us already.
I don't know. I've never been to M M L's training. I've been at Brad's training. I doubt very seriously M M L has anyone more experienced than Fred. He's probably the most experienced municipal attorney, possibly in the state of Michigan.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you know, the advantage would be he knows us and. I don't know. Such my own. I knew it if that was just why I needed to do that. I know. How the Michigan Association of Planning does so, does their training. Because I used to do some of them. So they would pay the consultant firm, like I got five hundred dollars to do it. Fully training and. I don't know, it's all in such. It was to say.
I do believe it would be Chris, who is the. The goal. Council for Michigan Municipal League. Unique advantage that he brings is that he was a former city commissioner and mayor. So sat in our seats. From both sides in terms of representing municipalities, but also being an elected official and a mayor.
No, I mean, it's probably a slight difference in perspective. What I would say. League, the league is a lobbying organization. Goal is to lobby on behalf of cities and municipalities. That's close to a term that represents you. Other than that, I think probably either of them could do a great job at it. He is the interim.
And is there, I think.
Actually, we don't charge.
Oh, it's free.
There you go.
Well, there you go. There is a distinct advantage.
Why are we talking? We encourage municipalities to take the freight. We don't charge.
There we go.
Okay, well, that's a distinction.
Is there an opportunity as well? Because I know with the planning commission meeting that we had, there were some concerns about. That. Chair following the directions of the O M A and so forth. Could we have other members from? Other commissions and so forth, chaired in Open Meetings Act. I don't think that would be hurt us in any.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I, but I think what you're looking for or what I'm hearing you guys say, I think. This is going to be more tailored towards you. I, I don't know that you want to dilute it. I, and get off on, you know, it's really easy to go down the rabbit holes. I don't know that I would. You are different than the planning commission and. Maybe we just do more than one if, if other people are interested, but I, I would keep it to you.
I think the sub-commissions could benefit separately from, you know, from the same training. Whether it's the planning commissioner, Z B A or whoever, you put them all together in one group and do the secondary training.
I, I concur with Commissioner Schwartz on this. I know that we've had questions about how we conduct our meetings and some requests from our citizens. And I thought this training gives us, will give us a strong idea how our meetings should operate with the guidance of our, our council. And then we can make sure that we're doing everything correctly. I, I like that idea better than piecemealing a little thing here and piecemealing. I think that gets confusing and then it just kind of. Everything spirals out that way. So one strong training and then a conversation about how we're going to conduct our meetings. Makes more sense to me getting it all done in one, you know, swoop, you know, rather than piecemeal. Some resolutions together here and there. That makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I agree. I think if we're going to have a workshop, I think the question and answer period will be very, very valuable for us. Our group. Really start to talk about. All those parts and pieces. I think that's very important.
If, if that's the route you're going, I think you need to talk about, you know, what kind of session this is. Because as Burke mentioned, it's intended as a. Training. And so when you come to some training, then you are not going to be able to have. Discussions amongst yourselves at that meeting. You can have a follow on. Pre-meeting. Training will not be an open meeting as such. Involve dialogue.
No, I meant your question.
They're all back and forth.
Dialogue would have to be between councilors.
Right, right. That's what I meant. Sorry.
I think that's, that's good. It gives us the time to learn and then we come back to a pre-meeting and have that dialogue.
How soon do you think we can schedule it?
Whenever you guys give me dates, we'll get it on.
I think sooner rather than later would be better than later. One question we know we want to ask is about public comment. That kind of stuff, but we want to leave until after we have the training.
You guys want to do evening? Daytime?
I, I will make myself.
I'll, yeah, I'll make myself.
How about the, how about the second or the fourth Monday? Six.
We can't do the second.
That's true.
We have meetings and other.
Yeah.
It was five Mondays.
Well, yeah, there is. I saw that on the calendar.
We could do the twenty second. I mean, hopefully. We can do the twenty. Um, the twenty ninth are awesome, awesome. Twenty ninth would work. If, if you guys are trying to stick to Monday. We couldn't do the eighth. Obviously, the fifteenth were here and the twenty second, twenty ninth would work for me.
Yeah, that's great.
Everybody that can't do the twenty ninth.
Can't do that twenty nine.
You cannot.
Is there another day that works in April?
Does it have to be in the evening or do we care?
No, no.
Depends on the time.
April thirty.
You have to have that because three thirty.
Oh, that's seven. Depends on the day.
Wait, Tuesday, the thirtieth?
Friday will be one.
That's your. We could do it in the evening, but during the day, we're in court all day.
No. Sorry, my Tuesday evening, the thirtieth.
I think we can make that work.
That work?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Okay.
What time?
You can pay April thirty.
How, how early can we start on the third year of everyone? Four, five, six, huh?
I can do anything.
I can do it.
Anytime you want to do it.
Yeah, when do you get off?
I could do. We can do four. If anybody wants to start.
Well, we don't close till five thirty. Five? What, thirty to five? Two to five, two to five, five. Five P M.
Fred doesn't have anything written on the calendar, so I'm going to double check tomorrow. I'm putting it on the calendar.
You got my calendar.
Would it benefit Fred if any questions were forwarded ahead of time? About scenarios or things?
In my experience with Fred, it doesn't matter. But if you would like, it's your turn. Because if he doesn't know, he will get you. He will find the answer.
Okay, anything more we want to talk about on that subject tonight?
We're just doing then. Open meetings, not FOIA discussion.
We can do FOIA if you'd like, but it's too, usually that's two different trainings, but if you want to ask FOIA questions, Fred would be able to answer them. But I think his outline would be. Close.
What? Anything else on that tonight? Uh, number two. So we were notified last week, actually, from. Toby Berry, who heads up our region for the state housing plan work group that we have going on. Grant opportunity or grant opportunities of my neighborhood and my neighborhood. Program through Mishta. The C D B, as I understand it, and Jay will speak more on this, the C D D G money that used to flow to non-entitlement communities now. Is housed within this program at Mishta. And this is the first rollout of it. And the first round of that opens. Application window opens today, closes in two weeks. And so we were able to get this on your agenda for today. Found the regular meeting agenda. Give us authority to do it. Apply for some of these funds. We thought it beneficial to try to get in. In the very first round, there are other rounds, but there's eight point eight million dollars for our region. Not a lot. We're talking about a region that includes Livingston, Washington, Monroe, One O A, Jackson, and Hillsdale. So we expect quite a bit of cops. Issues from that, but thought we could possibly get a leg out there if we got in. And had some others, as I said, it was just announced and so a lot of places won't be. We hope set up to. Apply in this first round. We would like to. So there's. Talk about the programs we would like to apply to or we would like to move to.
Good evening. Thanks for the time. You'll see there's two programs that we've, two parts to the program that we'd like to apply for. The first one is a rehabilitation grant. That's for owner occupied, single family housing, could be, could be multi-family housing, but we're focusing on single family housing. They can get up to forty thousand dollars to rehabilitate their home. And there's a list on the second page of qualifying. Second page of both eligible activities, energy efficiency, accessibility improvements, minor home repair. Skier rehabilitation, substantial rehabilitation, and rental redevelopment. The guidelines that we want to use for the program would be those that you set forth for the revolving loan fund. So if you go back to September, that document's included in here to tell you what the revolving loan fund guideline were that you created. That would allow us to really focus on that same group. You focused at eighty percent of A M I for the, for the income requirements. This program does have some leeway angle to a hundred and twenty percent of A M I. Any project that's over ten thousand dollars will have a five-year lien on the property. After five years, that lien's forgiven. If you sell the house before the five years is up, that, that owner has to repay Mishta that money. So whatever that may be. It did include the A M A guide or the A M I guidelines in the package as well to show you what it is. We're requesting an ask up to four hundred thousand dollars for this program. The second part of the program is a public amenity program. We can request up to seventy five thousand dollars. Component of this program is they're all considered one grant. So any dollars over four hundred thousand dollars has to be matched one to one. So for the public amenities, we're asking seventy five thousand dollars. We'll match that one to one with the enhancement grant. And it'll be used in the main lane, town square project. There's some qualifiers. It has to be in the downtown. It has to help with certain aspects. This project would qualify with all of these. I did meet with Mishta last week for about forty five minutes, kind of go through the program and the availabilities. Highly recommended that we apply in the first window because it's granted, it's only eight point eight million dollars and then we'll go completely quickly. There are opportunities to apply for more dollars, up to two million per municipality, but you have to match them one to one. And then you get into sources of those funds and how they qualify and what you can use them for. And that's where we were with the revolving loan fund. If we figure out that we can use our revolving loan fund, we can still add that on top of this. And just use those revolving loan fund dollars as we choose to.
Is the revolving loan fund, does that act as the one-to-one match or not?
No.
There's, there's no match for the.
For the four hundred thousand, there's no match.
Straight grant.
Yeah, it's the seventy five thousand for the public amenities. Then that would be the one-to-one match and we have those dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Say it a different way. We, we thought we could also ask for an extra seventy five, which would be like free money for the town square project.
Right.
How many people do we have in the revolving loan fund? Is that money used up now or?
We haven't been able to use it because we haven't figured out how we can use it. Burke is doing some research related to that, but because it is not, because it is general fund money, we are restricted. By the constitution, I believe, inability to lend it. And so as envisioned, we haven't been able to implement it. This would, you know, we had appropriated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that purpose. This would almost double that as a grant program. We could go ahead and start implementing it as a grant program. If we're fortunate enough to get this money. To the tune of almost double what we had been attempting to deploy.
Do we have people waiting in line that we would give that to?
We have not rolled out the applications because.
So, and this is under the belief that you have to be currently. Under code enforcement and being cited to be a part of this program?
That's the, one of the rules that came from the revolving loan fund. We're using that as guiding document. You can, it doesn't, it's not a requirement of Mishta to do that, but that was a guiding document so we can differentiate where the priorities are.
I guess I, I raised the concern before that, you know, if there's homes that are not A D A compliant. And we have people that are living there, trying to convert them so that they could, so that they can have a wheelchair in their own home and stay in their home rather than having to sell their home. That that would be, that's not in the area of. Light enforcement, but those are the people that we would hope to be able to stay in house instead of having to sell.
Is there something, so that would be eligible for the program?
Yeah, absolutely.
You in terms of whether you want to expand it to include that. Is there something in our? Resolution that we're passing that? References, the. The current guidelines?
I don't think so. I don't, I'd have to remember about the.
Do we need to in our application? Indicate that we're strictly limiting those guidelines or we just show that we already have those guidelines in place? We were to modify them for this purpose. That would be okay with Mishta.
I believe that would be okay. Anything that we do beyond what they provide us is strictly up to us. It's the fact that we have a plan in place that allows us to execute more quickly than other municipalities. So if we need to modify it, I don't think it would be okay.
Well, if we're fortunate enough to get that, we can expand it. There's some logic to that, given. We do that more often.
Two things I want to add. They do allow for eighteen percent. Of the grant for administration. That's above and beyond the grant amount. And October first, a brand new round comes out of sixty million dollars. So another eight point eight million for our region. So we could get this one and then in October first, when the new round comes out, we can apply for that one and get it again. So there's some significant improvements that we can, we could apply to our community pretty quickly.
And this was meant to be the mechanism that MetroCard uses to infuse the C D B G dollars and. What they used to do was kind of.
Yeah, I think it's. Thirty five million C D B G dollars and twenty five million state dollars that go together to create this fund.
You said a second round comes out in October?
October first, yeah.
Need to modification, darling.
Well, like I said, this is on your agenda, your regular agenda tonight. Be good with that and then we get our engine in the next few weeks here. If you guys have any other questions about that. Hearing none. Matt, can you hear us?
He's going to come up. Matt's going to talk about some modifications, full trash drop off rules of Compost Center that you might put on your next engine.
So as Greg said, we're looking to make some changes after we've had a full year at the compost site with the dumpster. We, it has been heavily used. We have to go through two dumpsters a week to get cleaned out. It's just so we have enough room and we're compacting down each time we go out there too. So these prices are for. To kind of regulate the excessive use. We're looking to allow residents a one-time use. Free, as they should get with their payment into their box, into their trash, the solid waste fund. But anything beyond that would be a hundred and fifty dollars. Any non-residents would be a hundred and fifty dollars per server.
What time? How often?
What's that?
One time, how often?
Uh, they get one time each day we're open. So residents would have a free dump on. On Tuesdays and Saturdays, but if they wanted to come again that same Tuesday, they would have to pay the additional fee. And this would help offset our costs that we're seeing from exchanging the dumpsters out each week.
Oh, I could come every Tuesday. And not every charge.
Correct, exactly.
Is there a volume?
Yeah, it's an eight by eight load, which is a typical bed size of a truck. So you can set as much in the back end of your truck or trailer that's eight by eight. Take it to the site. Anything over that would be the additional cost.
How do you monitor whether that person comes back the second time?
But we got this. It's going to be the same attendant out there each day. So on Tuesday, it's going to be someone out there from eight to eight to, and they'll just keep track whether they're coming towards you now.
Do I have to show something to show?
They, they, everyone has a permit. Whoever's a, because a resident has a city permit that to get into the site.
Yeah, I, I did hear the complaint. The people were trying to go out there and they were already full, but I didn't know if it was just that everybody was using it or?
We, we found it's a lot of landlords that are using it. They're cleaning out the houses and they're bringing. U-hauls and trucks and trailers and everything back to back and it's just excessive. So we're hoping that these would regulate. Use out there.
I, I think it's a great idea. I know the fact I've been out there is that dumpsters full so quick early in the morning and.
So if you guys are okay with this, we would like to put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Good. Good.
Anything else from that? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our last scheduled item is further discussion regarding upcoming by some time.
Um, so I, you know, obviously have a lot of people asking and we need to revisit this now. And I, you know, I know we talked about a couple of days, you know, just doing it, like I know to come see is doing it like. I think Blissfield's too. I can't remember now. I read it. I don't remember now, but. If we do those few days. A, one of the questions is where do we want to do that? What I mean by that is what time of the year? Like, I know they celebrated, Gordon actually found, Commissioner Gauss found something, well, his cousin found something from the hundred. And they did it in September and I know why. It's because that is when that land was bought was in September because I had the historical museum look it up. For me. But we don't have to do it in September. They did. I know that's hard because then you're dealing with football games for area high schools. You're dealing with other activities that get crazy. You're going to have Art Delicious coming right after that. You know, summer seems to be logical. I know that's what was brought up. You know, obviously that's, summer's when both Blissfield and DeComcy are doing theirs. I, I don't know. You know, if you have a timeframe that you're thinking of. What, what a lot of people, the feedback I actually, I've actually talked to about the vice of Antonio, what a couple of people from the Comcy. And the feedback that they, the only feedback that they've given me on was, A, this was just a more palatable amount by going with a few days, which we all agreed with as well. But also that. You know, maybe just having almost like a, like an open meeting, like a town hall, like we open it up and just say, anybody that's interested. And then these people are going to come together and say, okay, now you're going to have to work if you come to this meeting. Like, you're going to have to be a part of these committees, but to open it up and not, that was the one advice I was given is to not. But to open it up and not, that was the one advice I was given, is to not just go out and pick people for these groups. Because that is where there were some problems and, and some of these other ones. So I'd like to make it, if you're okay with that, like make it some very open, it's not even like a meeting, it wouldn't have to be even on Zoom, just like a. Open it up to anybody can come in, you know.
Open house.
Open house, there you go, I opened, find the right word, but like an open house of like, if you're interested in being a part of. You know, the Bicentennial, you know, committee, and then that's where that can go from there. Now, I do know that there are some groups, and I got stopped even in Country Market the other day. Um, by two people with the same thought, and I've heard this before, um, that are like, well, we really wanted to like, you know. We wanted to see something like, this group maybe do something this month, and like, we would like to see something throughout the year. Well, that's fine, I mean, I think when, even when we were talking about it, in my opinion, that's fine, because if somebody wants to, if. You know, the service clubs all want to come together and do something together, or just Kiwanis, or just, you know, Rotary, and they want to celebrate the Bicentennial. If all the churches want to come together and celebrate the Bicentennial, that's great, it's not our event, that's fine. Like, I feel like that, and we can encourage that, and, you know, and I can even, you know, talk to a lot of these groups, you know, and, and, and. Kind of be that person, but it won't be city sponsored, it won't be anything the city's doing, it's their event, their thing, they're just celebrating the. The Bicentennial, like, that's kind of how, at least my take on that is, but I don't know.
I think that, I think that puts the experts in charge of that event, then, right?
Yeah.
So, I, I agree with that.
Actually, Meta Mayor, um, the Centennial actually was held June twenty eighth, two July four. Yeah, I think it was, but. Got a copy of the program.
Yeah, cuz she's got a really cool.
Yeah, yeah, June twenty eighth of July.
Share that with the rest of us?
I'll be happy to.
It's like a picture of a.
Yeah, I've got, I've got the whole program here.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was pretty cool, he just, he got it, he just made it out, historical museums, and they couldn't, he got some. I'm sure if they keep digging.
My, my cousin was cleaning out, I, I was there something, I paid my costs.
Um, but yeah, so I just, um, I mean, are, like, do you, what are you thinking for a timeline? Like, so that, cuz I want that, I mean, I feel, that's my opinion, that it should come from us, though, at least when this is gonna happen. Because the city would be putting it on for, you know, our side of that, for that, that big, you know, three days of events or whatever, you know. Are we looking for, you know, like, what things are we looking for, are we looking for a parade, are we looking for fireworks? I know we're trying to do fireworks at Fourth of July, so we'll have a little experience with that, so we'll be ready for the Bicentennial. Right, good, um, you know, uh, but like, are we, you know, what are we looking for? Are we looking to, you know, close down the streets for a couple days and have some heritage type things, you know, interspersed throughout as well? Like butter churning, or, you know, things like that through the decades or something. It can be anything. It can be anything like that, but I don't know, you know, what are your thoughts? Because I want it, you know, like, for our event, even though there would be a committee, it needs to be like, what are, what are you thinking?
Well, I, I, I think, let's try to schedule the town hall at the open house.
Yep.
Sooner rather than later.
Yep.
Get some community feedback, see what good people want to do. I think that, that will put us, drive us in a stronger direction.
Yep.
And then as soon as that's over, add that back to a, a pre-meeting conversation. Here's what people want to do, here's some places we could form, you know, the people that come to that town hall at open house, hopefully they would, they would be willing. To be on a committee for the ideas that they share with us. Carolyn, I know you do all the flowers, and I, I'm gonna, I probably gonna mess this up really bad. But, but my mom was talking about how Adrian used to be the Chrysanthemum capital of Michigan or the country, or something like that. And I just.
The museum can tell you about that.
They have a whole thing at a museum on it.
And I know you're, like, I know you do a lot of the flowers and things, yeah, so I just, things like that, it would be neat to have some. People who are really interested, their, their, their hobbies and specialties to be able to share some of the things from Japan.
You know what, if you let them decide what time it is, get recommendations from them. Say, give us recommendations, then we'll come back and choose.
Hey, yeah.
Because, you know, some kids that have athletes might say, I want it during, you know, those dead weeks they have in the summer. Where their kids don't have games, they don't have practices, they don't have seal camps. And they might be saying, well, really, that's the week we're involved vacation, so we don't want to have. I mean, everybody's gonna have a reason.
Right.
But just give the reasons, their understanding, and just make the best decision, information.
As many people as can.
I know that, um. I, um, I do know that, um, I go to the Town and Gallon meetings, which is, um, a part of the D D A. But, um, so that involves L A S D, ADR public schools, Jackson College, Santa Heights University, ADR and College. And, um, so I did, we really meet quarterly, but at the last one, you know, I brought up about this, and you know. We're gonna be looking at logos, there's gonna be things like this, this might be an opportunity for, you know, with college, you know, maybe it's a graphic design major. But it could be a high school, or, you know, it could be things, you know, it, it, it could come from any area, it could come from the tech center, you know, something like that. So I, I did put that out there a little bit on them already to start thinking about, and they were very excited about that. And then schools really do wanna, you know, get involved with that, and, um. I, I know that Sienna said, you know, they would maybe do, they kind of think they would like to do some kind of a hundredth day. For, um, us when they're in session, but see, that's another thing, that's their thing, they can do that, that's great, it's not something we're in charge of. But I know, um, you know, ADR Public Schools, he, uh, Nathan Parker was really excited about that, and the prospect of, you know, let's get, is involved in, um. You know, so we, as soon as we can get that moving and stuff, I, I can keep having those conversations as well with, with that group. And we do have a meeting coming up.
Yeah, this month, April.
That's right, it's April, I forgot one month, we're in, it's April first, uh, so we can bring that up, you know, to them again, and at least just put that in their ear. Because they, and they were excited to have been like, talking about, you know, maybe there's something that they can do just on their, at their own campus. Or at the schools to, you know, about Bicentennial and having those discussions. But also to get them involved where maybe it's the logo, or maybe it's artwork of some kind, or something like that. So, um, if we did this, like, open house, do we have to, I mean. If, if we're all there, but we're not having like discussions, we can all be their guests, can we just hear what public has to say about it, we don't have to have it on Zoom, or?
You don't have to, but.
I mean, we can, I don't care, I'm sorry, I'm trying to make it easier for not to get more work for you.
I mean, that's, we've. Not necessarily use Zoom for our open houses, so it's something for you to think about, whether that helps bring more people to.
It might.
The meeting, I, I mean, there has to be something, though, a format that people on line can hear. Standing around, not at the microphones, just having conversations. Now, they have not been very well tended to. Like that, we, we really need to do some substantial promotion. Get people in. I mean, I think location wise, in terms of the library, the uh, presentation on Wariama, that was, that was built for that spot. And would not have been conducive here. Um, thinking about table wise and table talk and, you know, getting, getting the feelings out with who's going to invite, you know, the churches. Who's gonna have the school reps, who's gonna have lots of Rotary, uh, reps, uh, present, those sort of things. I could hear the process was there, the city band, those sort of things.
Yeah, so we'll need some time to like, get that out there, so make sure that it's, you know, that they can make it work around their schedules as well, not like, you know, hey, next week. That won't, you know.
So I think, um, in, in considering that, we want to definitely promote enough, have enough time to promote that. But we also need to think through, you know, come Memorial Day, like, so graduations and all of that.
Yeah.
Life gets busy for everybody right there, so let's, um, make sure we get this in before that.
Oh, yeah.
And then, but also give us ample time to promote it.
I was thinking like, beginning of May, mid-May, like, I was not thinking past that for sure, that was like last.
Yeah, cuz I, I, I think it's imperative to get it in before summer gets here, but I, I also wanna give us time to promote it. And get it out to as many people as possible.
Agreed.
If you want us to, like, the library about room availability early in the night. On the day that you.
Our second Monday.
May thirteenth is the second Monday, May thirteenth is the second Monday.
We did it at evening, I think people get busy on the weekends.
Yeah.
Weekends, I'd be worried about proms and sports, or picking up for spring, and I'd be a little worried about that.
The second, uh, Tuesday.
The second Monday's.
Monday, excuse me.
Thirteen.
The thirteenth, does that work?
It's not Friday the thirteenth. It works for me, but does it work for everybody else?
Well, it's not an official meeting, is it?
No, I mean, and it.
The library.
I, I prefer six, yeah.
Six to seven thirty.
Seven thirty, yeah, cuz I guess.
I, I.
Always put it in.
Yeah. So can you get, it, once you get that confirmed, can, I mean, if, if the library can do it, then. Can we get it, we're starting to get promoted, that we can all share it and get ahold of anybody and everybody, like you're on.
Right, yeah, if we could get maybe even just a save the date graphic, I like.
Something like that, that we can get out. Cuz I, I know people that have asked me, and I'm sure we all have people that have asked us, and then we can share it with those, and they could share it on. And we can get that out to the media as well, I mean, they come to most of our meetings, but at least then.
Eventually.
All right. Uh, one thing too, the reason I would like to stay, um, for those of us that went to Japan, I know they brought up. That they really want to come back for our Bicentennial, and they brought it up several times. And I took it as they will make a special trip, whether the Michigan group comes at that time, well, actually, they won't, cuz they come this year. They said they will come back, but they want to come back for the celebration part of it, so that sooner we can get, that's another reasoning for me wanting to get these dates. You know, by summer, so we're giving them like a year ahead, because they do want to come and send some delegates here for our. Um, for our anniversary, unfortunately, we couldn't go to theirs cuz of COVID at the time, but, um, cuz it was gonna be the same way, we were gonna go on an off time. But go to theirs, but, um, I know they really want to come, and I want to give them a lot of lead time on that as well. That, that's another reasoning for trying to get this, and I, I think summer worked really well for them too, by the way, they did mention that at one point, so. Last time they came in July, and they said that was a really good time for them, so. Yeah, so.
Um, yeah, I just, um. Social media's been blowing up the last week or ten days about. Dirty water, smelly water, it's, I mean, we've talked about it in the past, but it's getting a whole lot of attention the last week or ten days. So I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know whether we need to make some public statement about what's going on, what's causing, I mean, we've talked about what's.
But I mean, we'll do the press release, I included, uh, something in my newsletter about it as well, I mean, since we're. Talking about it right now, it. Just the, the compound is called jasmine, it's an organic compound, but it's not harmful. It is detectable by humans at extremely low levels. Present in the lake water. Used relatively more lake water, which we're doing right now, and if the fourth well gets there. Then it reaches a level that it's detectable by people, I'll just taste it if I want. Brush my teeth before the meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Yeah, so it's still there, that's very evident, but it's not, uh, in any way harmful. When the wells are all back to full capacity. It tends not to be at a level where people can taste it.
Do we have any timing and?
Uh, we'll tell you about those, uh. You know, I, I think it's only probably weeks away before we do that, to pumping full capacity out of the well. We're also exploring additional, it will is engaged in exploration about whether we can add additional capacity to that well field. This particular winter, there was a presence of that compound, because the lake never froze. Winter, but increasingly not. You know, that leads to more of the compound. Taste like earth.
Right.
It's the, it's the scent you smell after a spring rainstorm. It's a bit more pleasant, but. That is true, it's the same, that's called petrified, but. So, you know, we're working on it, and I know they've added back in activated carbon, which they usually use in the summer. But, um, in the treatment process, but my own observations, offensive, but they got the difference. You know, I don't know, others are engaging on social media, which is.
No.
Normally not a great practice.
No.
We have put out, we will put out a very detailed.
Thank you.
Anything else we need to talk about?
All right, at this time, we will begin public comment, just to reiterate, we need you to state your name and address. We will start inside the city chambers first, after we have exhausted all public comment, inside the chambers, we will open it up to Zoom participants.
I have a comment, um, my name's Melanie Butler, and the address is, I don't mind giving you my address, but I don't want to give everybody.
News source of your city of Ada resident or not?
And that's why I know you guys want that, you, I didn't care about Madison's ownership. And I'm glad you're following the rule, but, um, there's like five or six other rules too, that like the name, that hasn't been followed for.
Sorry, go ahead.
Doug Spade, Adrian. I do want to comment that. The water issue, we knew nothing about this coming up, it was a big topic on our show on Saturday. It was started by a gentleman who says he and his wife come to Adrian to eat often. And had such a bad experience, they told the restaurant, they love the restaurant, but they're not coming back. And he tried to call the city, and whoever she, he talked to said they wouldn't take a message. That you had to talk to the water department, he got nothing but a recording and no call back. Now, I understand your concern about how you communicate this. I understand the concern about social media, but Mike and I are very legitimate local news media. And I can tell you that we've tried to call Mr. Sadler and email him, and he never responds to us. That is not the way to solve the problem. We would be happy to have him be on our show, on the phone, explain it. We ran the news story when the news release went out, but you can communicate better with the news media than you are. It only hurts you folks, and I keep saying over and over, there's a lot of bad P R about the city hall and about the city. That could be corrected. That could be corrected, we're not here to give you a rough time, we're here to work with you and help things to be better, but city government people are not good, with the exception of Greg. At getting back to us when we have legitimate questions, and we hear from listeners every day on questions and issues. We try to be very careful about your time or the time of city officials when we ask questions, but there is a communication problem. City Hall can do better, we're not the enemy.
Mr. Spade, were you able to get, I've just, and I'm just asking, if we're being effective, were you able to get the letter that Mr. Sadler put out? Um, when he explained things, were you able to find that? And email, okay, all right.
Yes, and we use that on the news.
Okay.
But we were trying to clarify, our, our philosophy always is, and on our show, people can call and talk about the issues all they want, but we'd rather have the facts.
Sure.
To present to them.
I was just, I was, I was asking, I'm just like hoping our reach is getting better.
Sure, sure, I understand.
Thank you for answering.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we just wanna be able to get the right information, no. And thanks for asking that.
Hearing no more public comment, inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants.
Uh, Ken Tokar's one ten, South Locust, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, all right, so I guess I wanna follow up on Mr. Spade, um.
Can you say your name, please?
Yeah, Ken, Ken Tokar, City of Adrian resident, one ten, South Locust, um. Uh, today's a perfect example of where the city needs to look at their processes and their communication, um, I just happen to be listening and. I use the dumpster at the compost on a regular basis, um, I'm kinda disappointed to hear that. Me as a single family homeowner is gonna be penalized because of landlords, if you're gonna increase the rates, you should increase the rates different. For residents than you are from landlords, um, the other part with communication is, you know, you guys don't. Talk about or post what you're gonna talk about in the pre-meeting agenda, so how is the general public gonna know? That you guys are gonna change the rates in the process for using that dumpster? How are you gonna get public input, and how are you gonna communicate and tell the public, hey, we're gonna change the rates and we want your input? I mean, based upon what I heard today, it sounds like you heard all you wanna hear from Matt, and at the next meeting, there's gonna be something on the consent agenda. To approve the rate changes, and then for the next month and a half, you're gonna have people complaining. About how the, the rates were changed and how that wasn't communicated to the public, the other part of it with communicating to the public when you do change the rates, how are you gonna tell people? That it's gonna get changed, are you gonna send something in the water bill, are you gonna post something on the website? Are you just gonna change it, and then when some guy or some lady shows up with a truckload of stuff and gets turned away from someone, that's how they're gonna find, and what kind of goodwill? Is that gonna give to people in the community when they haul all their stuff over there, only to find out, oh, I didn't get this sticker, or I didn't do this, or this was my second time over there? Please do something about your communication and the way you process and do things for the public, thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, and we will begin our regular meeting out in the chambers, chambers at seven oh five.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for April first, two thousand and twenty-four, if everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts. Not here, and Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present, with the exception of Commissioner Roberts. May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Roberts?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss and Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, yes, Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Motion approved by unanimous vote. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Schwartz, roll call, please, Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath, yes, agenda approved by unanimous vote. May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Schwartz, roll call, please. Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath, yes, Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by unanimous vote. Moving on to our regular agenda, resolution R twenty-four dash zero thirteen is from community development. It is a resolution to authorize submission of an application to the Mishta Michigan Neighborhood Grant Program. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments?
Just again, uh, comments from the pre-meeting, um, with the understanding that this would, uh, include, uh, options for ADA compliance, uh, with homeowners as well.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Castleberry and Commissioner Miller, roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry. Yes. Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath. Yes. Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to public comment, this is general public comment, we will begin inside the city chambers first, and then open it up to Zoom participants. For the record, please state your name and address, and you will see your, the time on the screen. Right there, there you go, that way everybody can hear it on Zoom too, thank you.
Got something to hand to you first. I thank you all very much, uh, my name is Matthew Witty, I'm from Raisin Township, uh, my address is six seven six six North Raisin Center Highway. Uh, that's a come see address, and, um, I'm here today, you know, a, as a. Fellow citizen, a representative of we the people here in this one nation under God, and I, I think the same as basically everyone in this room, person in faith, and, um, like I say, a fellow citizen, a, and. My wife Vivian and I are sponsoring an event for Illinois County on May twenty-second, okay, and our purpose is to get all locally elected officials. Uh, to attend this, this event, so I'd appreciate it if you would mark your calendars. Now, uh, the event, uh, we call it a review of public election data, and we have world renowned physicist, Dr. Douglas Frank, presenting in person. Um, Dr. Frank presents his analysis of election data, uh, full time around the United States, and he travels the country to meet in person with state and local officials. Uh, about the analysis that he performs, now, this is your invitation to meet Dr. Frank face to face, and to hear his fascinating analysis, and have the opportunity to ask him questions, okay? If, if you do, I, I, you know, I appreciate your attendance, and you'll be glad that you did attend if you do go, now, the meeting is on May twenty-second, that's a Wednesday, and it's a, a, a meeting in the morning at eleven o'clock. And it'll be, uh, right here at Hooligans Restaurant downtown Adrian, so it isn't that far to go, uh, so I'd really appreciate your, uh, making plans to attend our meeting. Now, there's no charge for the event, uh, food and drink will be available, or for assistance if you want. And I hand you a flyer as a reminder, you know, that, that people, because, Vivian and I certainly look forward to seeing this, we look forward to seeing this. What we consider to be the private event in the morning for elected officials, so you get the opportunity to talk to Dr. Frank and ask him questions, so that's my comment, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, inside the chambers, are there, is there any public comment on the Zoom participants? Cannot talk today, sorry. Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
I'd like to just say, I think we have the opportunity to congratulate the Adrian College Women's Hockey Team for winning a national championship. I don't think we've said anything about that, I mean, we, it's nice for the area to have something like.
Hi, Mary, uh, April is National Crime Victim Awareness Month, and, uh, Chief Emmerich's in the back, I, um. Have worked in crime victim advocacy and, and child forensic interviewing, um, for much of my career, and just recently, I've, I've been able to talk with a lot of counseling agencies. And people that work with victims of crime, and I have gotten so much positive feedback about Adrian Police Department, so in light of Crime Victim Awareness Month, I want to say thank you. Um, and thank you to the troops, please let them know from me that I'm very proud of them and the work that they've been doing.
And just want to, um, before we close out, just want to bring your awareness that it is. World, um, Autism Awareness Day tomorrow, April second, I am a mother of an autistic child, so I'm already wearing blue a day ahead, but, um, wear your blue tomorrow. And, um, let's light the town, town up blue, but just to bring awareness that we have many, many citizens that are on the spectrum and. You know, and just to bring awareness to that and how we can interact better with those on the spectrum and, and how that affects their socialization skills and, and what we can do to. To make it a better place for all to live. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.